Board of Education meeting for September, it's September fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, no more pictures. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brzink.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. And Sue, will you please also verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you kindly. This evening, we do not have bright lights. I thought we might, but next month?
Still pretty early.
Yeah, next month, we should have some students presenting.
Yes, we will.
But we do have some recognitions, and Mrs. Hedstrom will introduce some new vice principals that we, associate principals that we have.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to introduce you to three of our associate principals that you hired last month. The first one is Jeremy Martin. Jeremy, would you join me, please? Jeremy Martin was hired last month as the associate principal at South High School. He comes to us from Elm Brook School District, is the former athletic director and assistant principal at Brookfield East. Jeremy?
I'm really excited to be here in this district and to work over at South. It feels like a real family culture there. I'm real excited about the opportunities that are there for me. Are there any questions you might have for me? It might be easier.
Mrs. Reinacek?
How was your first week and a half?
Busy. No, no, it's been a lot of fun. Getting to know a lot of kids, getting to know a lot of staff. It's been fun.
Mr. Brian?
Well, now that North has beaten Arrowhead, we expect South to do the same. There's tremendous, you know, when West won the state championship, they were prouder that they beat Arrowhead that year than they were for winning the state championship. So for North, that was a tremendous accomplishment, and we're sure South will fall through.
Yep, matter of time.
Matter of time, yes.
Thank you.
Well, welcome, Jeremy.
The next assistant principal I'd like to introduce to you is Maria Demato Cuji. Please find me, please. I wanted to make sure I pronounced that all correctly. Maria is also an assistant principal at South High School. So we've had some pretty exciting things going on at South, as you all know. And Maria, why don't you, I'll let you tell them where you are coming from and...
Sure. Sure. Maria Demato is fine. The, my husband's last name Cuji didn't work well in a high school, so. Anyhow, moving on from there, I'm coming from West Dallas Central High School. I was there for ten years. I was a math teacher, a very successful math and avid teacher, for nine of those ten years, and an academic dean the last and final year. So I'm really excited to be at South. I feel like it's home. I feel like, I thought I was gonna be a bulldog for life, but being a black shirt has been really great experience with a whole new team. It's just been really, really fun to kind of mold it into what we want it to be, so it's nice.
Questions?
Mr. Baumgart?
Just a comment. I'll warn you. Avid happens to be one of my favorite programs. Don't mess it up.
Oh, no. We hope to expand it. We hope to expand it.
It's wonderful. I've had such positive connections with some of the students over there, and some, after their graduation, there's been some really good stories, so I'm very pleased with it, and I'm sure you'll do well. You do come with an experience with Avid?
Yes, so I was an Avid elective teacher for five of my nine years.
Excellent.
At Central, yeah, so really, it changed me as a teacher, as an educator. It's really an amazing program, so.
Thanks for coming here with your experience.
Wonderful. It was very nice to meet all of you.
And finally, I'd like to introduce you to Deanna Burton. Deanna, would you join me, please? Deanna comes to us from Oconomowoc, and she is the new assistant principal at West High School. Deanna?
Good evening, and thank you so much for having me. I am extremely excited to join the team at West and Waukesha School District in general. Amazing administrative staff to work with, awesome teachers, and unbelievable students. We've had a tremendous kickoff to our school year, really focusing in the classroom on purpose, rigor, and growth mindset. And our teachers are up and running. We have adopted a new way of evaluating teachers, so we've jumped into that already with some rapid-cycle feedback where we're visiting classrooms more often for shorter periods of time, and teachers are so far loving it. Kids kind of look like, when you walk in, like, who's in trouble? But they will, they will get used to that process as well. So again, very, very excited about joining an excellent, awesome team of educators, as evidenced by just one indicator, is the recent Newsweek vote for being one of the top high schools in the United States. So, super excited. Thank you so much for having me. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you start your career in the Oconomowoc School District?
I did not. I started my career with MPS as an English teacher.
Okay.
And then I went over to Oconomowoc, and I served in multiple roles from associate principal, principal, and some district-level work as well around diversity.
Did you say middle school? You started in the middle school?
High school.
Oh, high school, okay.
So I'm coming back home to high school again.
So what year did you start at Oconomowoc High School?
Oconomowoc in two thousand and six. Again, thanks for having me, and I'm excited.
Well, I'd like to welcome all three of you to our district. We appreciate you choosing us, too. This is a two-way path. You guys have to make sure we're a match for you, and we appreciate you coming on board. You guys are in extremely interactive roles with our students, and you're gonna get to know the student body very well. And we look forward to having you apply what you've learned with your previous experiences, leadership experiences, and bringing that wealth of knowledge to our district. So, like to welcome you, wish you the best of luck moving forward. Always feel free to reach out to anyone on the board here. And let's give them a round of applause. Welcome. Thank you, Chris. Typically, we would have student representative reports next, but the school is a little, hasn't been in session very long, so we'll have to wait for reports in October. So we come to the section of our meeting where we allow citizens to speak, to address this board. We give up to three minutes for our citizens to speak to us. At the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Barbara Brzink will give a thirty-second warning to have you wrap up your comments. We expect all speakers to honor that time limit, to refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and to be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not follow these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that would detract from the meeting. Also, I ask that you silence your phones at this time. And we do have one person signed up, and that's Mr. Paul Reese.
You know, I'm very fortunate to be a person who cares very little about what other people think of me, otherwise I probably wouldn't do this. But Mr. Como just read something about what he expects everybody else to do. Yet every month I come up here, and I get nothing but comments and gestures from people out in this audience. That has got to stop. It is hard enough to stand here and talk without people trying to argue with me. Last month, Barb was trying to argue with me about the length of time that a principal was at Bethesda. She was there for three years. I called Sue Ellinger up and called and talked to her about it to find out if I was right or not. But unless three years is considered a long duration of time of employment in the city of Waukesha, I was right, that she had just, we had just replaced it. Then we're going on to STEM Randall. We met principal for there, which we just did last year. This is something that's happening over and over in this school district. Waukesha South has three new, one new principal and two new vice principals. My, my thing here is not, I'm not trying to have a gripe with anyone. I'm trying to point something out. I hear we're hiring someone who's gonna be traveling back and forth to Madison, and the board members question that, whether or not that was a good idea, whether or not this district would think it was a good idea to have a new superintendent every other year, if that would work well. I don't think it would, and I don't think anybody here thinks it would. And that's sort of my point, that why are we hiring people who just are, they come here and they say that they're here for the kids, and they're gonna do the best for our kids, but the first chance they get at thirty, someone offers them thirty pieces of silver, they're out of here. You know, they're not here for the kids. They're not here always for that. There used to be a time when this was a passion, when people were passionate about education, when there are, and there are a lot that are still passionate about it. But there are some that aren't, that are out for the dollar, and who don't care, and don't make, don't care about the community, have no ties to this community, no concern for it. That wasn't the case. You know, where my daughter goes to school now, there's teachers that have been there thirty years, thirty-some years. It used to be that way. They were part of the community. They took active, they talk about being, working with the board, not working with the community, not working with outreach into the community, you know, being a part of this community. That's what I'm looking for. And the duration of time, and Barb kind of brought it up, of employment is something that should be looked at. And it's not. I don't ever hear it here, how long someone's been employed, if that has anything to do whether or not we hire someone. Have they been at the job for more than ten years before? Are they gonna stick around? Have they only been at a job for two years? You know, I'm not trying to stir nothing up. I'm not trying to do anything other than point something out that I see here. I've been at my job for seventeen years. It's, it's just what I do, you know. I could go somewhere else, but I'm happy with that company, and I take pride in that environment and in that job that I do. Take pride in your work. Thanks.
There's, nobody else signed up to address us? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to, that didn't sign up that would like to step forward at this time? Okay. We'll move on to our minute approval. We do have one set of minutes to approve for our August tenth, two thousand and sixteen, regular board meeting minutes. Sue, are you motion to that degree?
So moved.
Second to that, second by Mr. Baumgart. Any discussion? Sue, will you take the roll call vote?
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Upstain.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
And Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero one, Sue. Moving on to our communications, we'll start with Dr. Gray.
I have no communications this evening.
Okay, thank you. And Mrs. Brzink, do you have an update for the Waukesha Education Foundation?
I do, Mr. President. The April date for the annual Waukesha Education Foundation Run Walk has been changed to May eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. Please note the change and plan to join in the walk or run for Family Fund to be held again at North High School with the new Les Hilly course. The WEF Marketing and Business Committee, Community Outreach Committees have merged. The first outreach was to meet with Suzanne Kelly, President and CEO, and Eric Hummer, Public Relations and Communications Coordinator of the Waukesha County Business Alliance. It was a very positive first step to work more closely with local businesses. The foundation is looking into becoming a nonprofit member of the business alliance. Do you know of any classes holding their class reunions in the near future? The WEF Alumni Outreach Committee chaired by Kathy Runtie would like to know about potential contacts to share the opportunities to support the foundation. Look for the foundation newsletter being planned for distribution in November or December. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brzink. Appreciate it. We'll move on to our Safety Committee report, given by Amanda Roddy.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are two reports actually to give. The committee met in late August, and they met on the twenty-fourth. And the first item discussed was a student-employee accident report that was reviewed. Next, Joe Cook had given his annual update to the Emergency Operations Crisis Response Plan. There is a discussion that the schools were given reminders to hold their safety and fire drills. Discussion regarding fire alarm systems that are now hooked up at the city and follow the requirements regarding system shutdowns. There was also discussion regarding delay-of-game protocol at the schools. It was announced that the partnership with the Lower Center has been dissolved. Students will now be located at the White Rock Campus, and the local authorities are aware of these changes, and the criteria to attend has also been modified. Glenn reported that over sixty projects at numerous schools have been completed, and at that time, there was a handful still left to be completed. He did want to note and to make sure that the board was aware that they appreciate the cooperation and the support to complete these projects. Side note. Then this morning, the committee met once again, and again, the student and employee accident reports were reviewed. Next, there was discussion regarding climbing ropes that are located in some of the district elementary schools. They are happy to report that there are no major health issues within these first few days of school. And the next Safety Committee will, meeting will be held at the Service Building on Wednesday, October the twelfth. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda.
Welcome.
Moving on to the Charter School Report, given by Mr. Baumgart.
It's now the Charter Program and School.
Oh, I stand corrected. Yes, you are correct. We actually changed that in policy, too.
We did, that's correct.
I'm just not used to that new policy, I guess.
Well, we're just getting started with the school year, of course, but I do have feedback from a couple of the situations. Flight Academy reported some positive highlights. It's all about growth. They've added two full-time teachers there, added a room for sixty additional students, one hundred and fifty maximum capacity. And forty percent of the current seventh graders are brand-new to the flight construction of an additional level up on the second floor, which they have named the loft. Optimistically, they're looking at adding some more students next year. And dawned on me, in looking at this, that, you know, we've had Flight for a couple of years now, quite a couple of years, and I've talked to Jody about it, and as part of her CNI, excuse me, Training and Teaching and Learning Program meetings, she's offered every month to have some kind of an, how are we doing on achievement at a program or at a school? And Flight will be included in that, so if we can see the positive outcome, outcomes of the Flight program. Moving on to E-Achieve, Rick reports, the most noteworthy thing to report from E-Achieve is that our enrollment is up this year. Of course, we won't have an official count until the third Friday happens, but we are opposed to have over seven hundred full-time students this year compared to six hundred and forty last year, as of the third Friday. Additionally, applications continue to come in daily, and we have a large stack of applications in various stages of approval. So he's very positive about that. And he says, "Our increase in enrollment has caused us to do some late summer hiring. A good problem to have." I heard from STEM Academy, you will find most of that in the board packet. I'll include the rest of this in the board packet. It's a lengthy report from Jim about all the positive things. There are so many good things going on there. I don't know how he gets them all done, because he's always typing. But anyway, you'll get that in there. A little bit from Inspire. We had a Advisory Committee meeting about two weeks ago, and Chris Del Ponte has offered a couple of things here. Of course, getting off to starting a new year, seventy-one dynamic freshmen and sophomores over at North. Excited to see the growth of the program, which occurred this current year. He has listed, and this will be in your packet, major goals for the coming year. He's listed four of them. I did want to just mention what they are, and mission and core beliefs is one of them. Developing personalized inquiry-based curriculum, building partnerships with the local community. And this one, I'll embellish just a little bit, fostering personal success skills. Something that has been viewed as maybe we've lost focus on, and by the way, think of this in the terms of the old language of soft skills. Jim Rickabout said, "We shouldn't call it soft skills anymore. It's too important to be a soft skill." So he suggested we consider personal success skills. So we will be emphasizing that in our programs over there, developing communication, self-direction, collaboration, creativity. So you'll see that as well, filled out in the packet this week. We have lots of things going on, I'm sure, at all the schools, but they're just getting started, and they were not, you know, real ready to send a whole bunch of stuff in with all the stuff going on. So anyway, that concludes the Charter Program and School Report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. I appreciate broadening it out from just the Charter Schools to our other programs and other schools, so. Because we do have many good things happening around the district, so that's good. We'll move on to our Consent Agenda. Mr. Clark, do we have any public gifts to report on?
Just one. Cardinal Holmes LLC constructed the Waukesha West Cafe in the Media Center. The estimated value of this donation is eight thousand dollars. This cafe will be utilized by students as a place to have healthy snacks and engage in academic and social conversation. The plan is to have the children run the cafe, giving them the opportunity for students to learn and grow as they operate the cafe.
Nice. That was a generous gift from Cardinal Holmes. Thank you for that. In your agenda, it includes a variety of categories for approval. We did not have any expulsions this past month, so at this time, if there's any item that my fellow board members would like to have set aside for separate consideration, please indicate at this time. Okay, seeing none, Pat Madden, would you please present the Consent Agenda for Approval?
President, earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of six resignations and thirty-two new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desks. Mr. President, I move that the Consent Agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mrs. Reinacek. Discussion? Sue, will you take the roll call vote, please?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. And then we'll move on to our Superintendent's Report, given by Dr. Gray.
Thank you, Joseph Como. I would say, over the last nine years, this is probably the smoothest start we've had to a school year. There were very, very few issues, or the typical, a few people, you know, missed the bus, or I think we had one young child lost for about twenty minutes, got on the wrong bus, but far less issues than we've had in the past. And I think part of it is, we've had a bus company now that works with us, that has worked well with us. We've done some other measures, such as making sure that students have to register for a bus ride, which then helps them determine which bus they're on. It also eliminates buses that we don't need. If you've ever been to some of our high schools, you'll see lots of buses lined up with very few kids on there, because they have to have enough bus to be prepared to pick up students in certain areas. But by registering, that, we were able to determine how many students would not be planning to ride the bus, and so that certainly saved us a number of buses there. But other issues, I mean, we had a few class-size issues, which we'll take care of once the third Friday numbers are in, but nothing, again, nothing like in prior years. We didn't have a lot of surprise attendees that cranked up class size. So I think we're, we're in very, very good shape. We have some good things going on. Obviously, our athletic teams are in full gear, and again, congratulations to North High School, which has come a long ways. Recall, last year, they were looking at saying, well, we need to get out of the classic eight, because it's tough to compete. But that shows you what, you know, if, we've had a coach there three, four years now, and he's built the program, and I think North is gonna be competitive, just like, just like West and our other high schools are. On your desk is a, this is just a draft, and I know some people have already, you know, said they'd like to see some different things on here. But basically, what it does is give some demographic and student information about the district. Nothing too unusual here. Again, we've got to add a few pieces in there. We've got to add maybe some more of our programs, such as Flight, Compass, and so on. And then, and then on the, on the following pages are the board priorities with bullet-point items on how we plan on meeting those priorities. And I'd like to, after things are cleaned up, turn this into a public document. Obviously, we'll put it out in color, make it available at our schools, so, you know, people can see that the board's expectations are high, and they're out there. And then they can also see what kind of things we are doing as an administration and a staff to meet those goals. So it just, it just landed on my desk today, and we'll be working on this over the next couple of days and turning it into what we think will be a very useful public document, available to our schools and our parents and so on.
Yeah, I like, I like this quick summary. Can pick up on some numbers real quick.
Yeah.
That's really nice, and to be able to share where do we want to go. That's, that's excellent. Any other comments on that?
And you'll have a chance to comment, too. I mean, like I said, we'll work it. I'll probably send you one more draft to review, and then if you have any questions or concerns, and then, and then we'll finalize it. We can laminate it, and you can put it by your, you know, your bedstand and wake up and read it in the morning, just to make sure.
Excellent. We are, we are required by DPI to publish some of this, right?
Yes, we are.
There's certain minimum requirements.
Correct, correct, yeah.
It's driving that, but I've never seen it in such a friendly and inviting way, so that's, that's good.
October thirty-first, district or state DPI report cards will be available. And I just was with Tony Evers today, asking him again, can we have a report card that's much more user-friendly, that simply doesn't define a school or a district by a single number, but that looks at the components, the growth components that we have in some of our schools? And it's, they're not making changes. Two more years is gonna take them to make changes, and it's, I think it's something pretty simple to do. It's very easy to emphasize those key components. But, you know, it's a big bureaucracy in Madison, and things just don't go real quickly, so.
Mrs. Brzink?
Are you saying that every school district in the state uses the same reporting device?
Well, it's the state's report card, where they, they have, the first thing you see is a picture of a state in a color and a number. And as we know, some of our schools have some very, very big challenges, but some huge growth.
Yes.
Very big growth, far exceeding the state average. But that gets obscured, because it's down in the corner, and it's not emphasized. And to me, those components that make up that score should be emphasized, because we have some very good, good things going on, but maybe not all five of the things are perfect. And, you know, if we have, if we get some of that information in time, we might be able to include it in this, in this particular draft. But it's not, it's not going public till October thirty-first, and that's, that's quite a ways from now, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to show which schools have made great progress.
Right, right.
And so maybe there are some major challenges, but are they working on those? That's, that's probably even more important than just seeing how many are, who, how many have attained, you know, the highest peak.
Right. And it is, it is very interesting to see the growth in some of our schools that have a very, very challenging student body. And, but it's all those things, to me, that should be, should be highly emphasized. But like I said, it's a big bureaucracy, and they just, change doesn't come easy down there, so. Some good news, Krista Crowder, one of our founders of Flight Academy, has been named to the Nine Teachers to Watch list by KnowledgeWorks. So that's, that's pretty exciting, and I think that's a good recognition. You know, Krista's really done a great job with that program, and she was part of that expansion this year. Jeffrey Taggy, who was also now is NAP over at Butler. But, you know, Krista still is, is the, kind of the anchor at Flight Academy. So well-deserved award for Krista. And our last item, on August seventeenth, we had GE here again for their volunteers. Hawthorne, Les Paul, Prairie, and higher. And again, just amazing the kind of projects that they can do. And I, I go around, I talk to these guys, and a lot of power tools this year, so. can do, and I go around and I talk to these guys, and a lot of power tools this year, so they love making things, and so a lot of power tools going on, and, but they were enjoying it, they're having fun doing it, and some of the benches and the tables and so on that they made were just amazing, and they do it in a day. I mean, those are projects that, you know, might take much, much longer, but they have enough manpower, they can get it done in a day. So, big thanks to GE, and we'll be sending a letter of thanks, and if we can, if the leaders are available at the October, November meeting, we'll have them come in and just thank them in support.
Yeah, we're always grateful for what they do, and they do it in such a friendly manner, and they're excited, and, you know, full of energy, and it just is fantastic.
So, a lot of great projects, again, by GE.
Great.
And that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Hats off to you, your staff, all the teachers, parents, too, getting the students ready to have such a good start to the school year, all of our vendors. It takes a big team to get everything coordinated, to get the year off to a good start, and I know Mrs. Hedstrom is probably like going, ooh, finally the year started. Been very busy over in HR, so thanks to everybody pulling together and getting everything started off smoothly. We'll move on to our committee reports at this time. First committee report is given by Patricia Madden for Compensation Committee.
We had no meetings, so I have no report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to policy, given by the chair, Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you. We have just one action item to present before you tonight, and we had the previous reading on that in the August meeting. This action item will involve revisions to Policy 8343, Board Agenda Preparation, and Policy 9130, Board of Education Committees. These policies are being updated simply to reflect the change in the name of the Curriculum and Instruction Department to the Teaching and Learning Department. I will combine these into one action, motion, I move for approval of revisions to Policy 8343 and, excuse me, Board Agenda Preparation, and Policy 9130, Board of Education Committees, as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Standing by Mr. O'Brien. Discussion?
I hope not.
Pretty straightforward, pretty straightforward. Sue, why don't you take the roll call vote?
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero, Sue.
The only other item I'd like to mention is that the next policy committee meeting is scheduled for September 20th. At this meeting, we'll be reviewing all of the actions we've been taking with Neola. It's not that we're going to be presenting the final policy revisions, it's just how this process has flowed out. That'll be on September 20th.
Thank you, Bill. Moving on to the Technology Committee, given by Patrick McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening.
Thank you, sir. Finance and Facilities, given by Chairperson O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Just want you to know, Mr. Baumgart, I second that, so you know there won't be any debate on the subject of the.
Very good, Kurt.
Yeah. We didn't have any action items at the meeting. I want to thank Ms. Madden for chairing in my absence, but I'll go ahead and do my duty here on the recap of the meeting, I wasn't able to quite attend. We did have four information items. We had a monthly budget report, the committee was presented a budget report for the month of August, $696,327 was reported in the general fund revenue, and $3,359,936 was expended during the month. $27,786,360 was reported in the special education fund revenue, and $207,056 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projections in other areas. We did have a tax incremental district discussion, Number Nine Amendment, the committee was presented with an amendment to the soon-to-be closing TID Number Nine being considered that would be transferred to TID's surplus increment, equivalent to remaining cash balance from TID Number Nine to TID Number 16, which would allow TID Number 16 to close early, 2017 versus 2034. The city is projecting a surplus increment in TID Number Nine of $270,000. As a tax entity for the properties involved, we do our portion. Based on our share of the tax bill, roughly 40% of this total, which equates to roughly $100,000. The cash payouts from the closing from a TID are called a defiance, defeceance, excuse me. If the amendment is approved, the district would forego this payment. When the TIDs close our tax base, when the TIDs close, our tax base is increased because the property valuation is returned to the tax roll. Being a negative state aid school district, we would lose some aid but gain a larger tax base to distribute the impact. Mr. Como, the district's representative on the TID board, asked if this be put on the agenda to gather input from his fellow school board members. Based on the feedback from the Monday's Finance and Facilities meeting, the review board unanimously approved the amendment this morning. Proceeding on, district line of credit, annually mini-school districts borrow for cash flow purposes to timing of tax receipts and state aid combined with regular requirements to make payroll and pay other expenses. The line of credit is preferred over the cash flow borrow for districts that do not anticipate needing the funds unless there's an emergency situation or unplanned revenue reduction. At the October 14th school board meeting, the resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipatory promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed $5 million will be an action item on the agenda. That will be at the October 14th school board meeting. 2015-16 Financial Year Update, the committee was presented a summary of the revenue, expense, and change in fund balance for all the school district of Waukesha's individual funds. The 2015-16 audited financial statement will be presented to November 9th Finance and Facilities meeting. I wonder if we can change the name of our committee, so you don't have that tongue twister anymore. There were no discussion items, and Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Baumgart?
I don't think we have a board meeting on October 14th. It probably is October 12th.
Mr. Clark?
It's the 12th. It would be the 12th. We stand corrected on that, Mr. Baumgart, thank you.
I was paying attention, and you didn't ignore me. Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. People can play unappropriately. Very good. All right, thank you, Kurt. Moving on to our Teaching and Learning Committee.
Ah, you got it.
Given by Mrs. Brusink.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held on September 6th, 2016, at 6:00 PM. We have four information items and one discussion item that appear on the agenda for Teaching and Learning this evening. The information items, there's four of them, and the first one relates to Dual Enrollment Academy update. The Teaching and Learning Committee heard from Amy Lang, the district's career and tech ed coordinator, who provided information about the Dual Enrollment Academy at WCTC. 2016-17 is the fourth year of the Dual Enrollment Academy program. Several of the program descriptions were included in your packet. Amy shared statistics and success stories of our students who have attended the Dual Enrollment Academy. Number two is the course updates for Waukesha Academy of Health Professionals. Amy Lang and Steve Fisher, Assistant Principal at South High School, offered an update on change of course names for the Health Academy. The course name changes provide consistency and clarification. Amy and Steve also updated the committee on a cross-curricular course, Professionalism in Healthcare, which adds more flexibility to student scheduling. Next is a Secondary Literacy and Math Institute update. Amy Lang, Erica Miller, and Dan Pachinsky, the secondary coordinator planning team, presented information and highlights about the professional learning opportunities provided to the 600-plus secondary teachers, learners, at the district's 2016 Three-Day Summer Institute. Next is the Elementary Literacy and Math update. Emily Ready and Rose Palmer, the elementary coordinator planning team, attended last week's Teaching and Learning Committee meeting to offer insight into the learning that 350 elementary teachers, learners, participated in during the district's 2016 Three-Day Summer Institute. Both summer institutes received very positive feedback from participants and the survey data. Each month, the full board should expect to hear student achievement updates as highlighted during each Teaching and Learning Subcommittee meeting. This month, we heard from Meadowbrook Elementary School. The Student Achievement Update at Meadowbrook School is the Comprehensive Literacy Model School and Sale update. Jessica Wagner, principal, Sharon Thede, Director of Student Services, and Meadowbrook Sale Coach, and the Meadowbrook Sale Team were at a meeting last week. They provided an update for the Teaching and Learning Committee on student achievement gains made as a result of the Comprehensive Literacy Model, or also known as CLM, strategies happening in classrooms there. Meadowbrook is in its third year of CLM implementation, and students have made net-worthy gains in the literacy achievement. As the achievement gap closes, the sale process has determined a focus to guide the work in the frame of a theory of action. The theory of action was enclosed with your packets. Thank you, Mr. President, that concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 4th, 2016.
Thank you, Mrs. Brusink. I also appreciate you pointing out that our teachers are learners, and that they're setting excellent examples of being lifelong learners, and that's really what we're all about.
They showed us some information from the institutes over the summer, et cetera, and it was very, very impressive, and the number of teachers that participated was outstanding.
And Todd, you've gotten some really good feedback from some of those teachers, too.
Correct, yeah, I pulled a group of teachers in to kind of talk about that as a means to help schools focus, which also helps reduce some workload issues, and so the meeting was very positive in that regard.
Thank you, Mrs. Brusink. Moving on to our Human Resources Committee, given by Mrs. Pat Madden.
Thank you, Mr. President, we have two action items tonight. The first one is the administration is recommending Melissa Horn for the position of Principal of Waukesha STEM Academy, Randall Campus. Ms. Horn believes in transparency, she is a strong communicator, and has a technical background. She appreciates challenges, is proactive, and out-of-the-box thinker. Melissa Horn makes it a priority to reach out to parents and students. Ms. Horn is a seven-year principal at Wisconsin Virtual Learning Academy and former teacher in New Berlin Public Schools. She received her Master of Science in Educational Leadership from Cardinal Stritch University, and her Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education from Marquette University. Salary and benefits will be according to middle management policies. I move to approve the appointment of Melissa Horn to the position of Principal at Waukesha STEM Academy Randall Campus.
Is there a second? Standing by Mr. Baumgart. Discussion? Baumgart?
I had the opportunity to sneak into Randall a week or two back, and she was holding a little meeting with five or six teachers, and I guess Level One, they call it now, and very impressive. First of all, she didn't mind being interrupted by me, which helps, but you could see her communication relationship building immediately. I mean, it's just there, and I was very impressed with the opportunity to visit her and get her here, and interesting, her background with the virtual school, I thought, well, you're one of our competitors over there. She says, no, Rick and I got along just great, we shared a lot of best practices, so nice to hear that, so.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Bill. Other discussion, comments, questions? Mr. O'Brien?
Ms. Hedstrom, you interviewed, or who was the interviewer?
Who was all in the interview?
Yeah.
The, there was probably about 15 parents, teachers, support staff, administrators in that interview.
Well, I just had a question, because when you think of going from a virtual learning principal to a brick-and-mortar principal, not that she's not going to be great, but it just kind of, it was just kind of like, oh, that's, because I know how different that environment is in the brick-and-mortar environment, and I know a lot of people that are in the virtual environment, like our Eacheat would say they have no desire to go back to a brick-and-mortar classroom. But she apparently did, from what I gather.
Yes, and from what I gather, she's been serving in an interim capacity based on your approval this evening, and she's been very well-received by students and parents.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Sue, why don't you take the roll call vote on approving the principal of Randall STEM Academy?
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero. Pat?
My second action item is the administration is recommending Daniel Kaiser for the position of Director of Secondary Learning. Daniel Kaiser comes to us from Madison Metropolitan School District in the role of Director of Advanced Learning. He is a thoughtful relationship builder with a strong knowledge of instructional technology and its impact to positively affect student outcomes. He also has experience with personalized learning pathways. Dan has a teaching background in math and physics, so admits to having an engineer brain. Dan has a tireless work ethic and is eager to be on the cutting edge of innovation in education. We are excited about the value add that Dan will bring to our teaching and learning team. Mr. Kaiser received his Doctor of Education from Edgewood College, his Masters in Educational Leadership from UW Milwaukee, his Masters of Curriculum and Instruction from UW Whitewater, and his Bachelor of Secondary Education from UW Whitewater attached to his resume. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. I approve the appointment of Daniel Kaiser to the position of Director of Secondary Learning.
Is there a second to that motion? Standing by Mrs. Reinichak. Discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
When I look at his resume and we go through his experience level, he spent his first year teaching, one year at Jefferson High School, two years at Fort Atkinson, five years in Janesville as a physics and math teacher, and then eight years as an assistant principal at Janesville Parker. So, overall, in the Janesville School District, he was there almost, I'd say, almost 13 years, from 1999 to 2012, and then he moved to the Monroe District for two years, and then he moved to the Madison District for, I guess it'd be almost two years now, 2014, 2016. You know, we get a lot of comments about short-time stuff, and the reality is, I mean, I've looked at resumes both in the private sector and the public sector, and there's a lot of movement for these high-achieving people, or people who'd want to advance, and I think most of the time, you like to think that you could have a 17- to 30-year career someplace, but that doesn't always happen that way, and there's a lot of reasons for that in today's age of mobility. I look at the resume, it's outstanding, I think it's a great addition for what we're trying to accomplish in this district, and I look forward to voting for approval.
I was pleased to see that there were 66 applicants, too. This is a tough position, and so we must be, I'm assuming we're very attractive to people throughout the state to coming and working here, Mrs. Hedstrom, and 19 of them took the higher view, and that's a good, that's a good solid base, I think, to choose from. Did you feel happy from the pool of applicants?
We actually ran a couple of processes, so we interviewed several, a couple of times, and reopened the position, because we were looking for the right fit, and we believe that Dan is the fit.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero, Sue.
President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. That's a wrap-up on all of the committee reports, under other business. Now would be a time to ask my fellow board members if they have any recommendations for future agendized items for either the full board meeting, or perhaps to toss over to a committee chair. Mrs. Reinichak?
Thank you. I'm wondering, I know that we give a recognition ceremony for our employees that have been in the district for 15 years, 20, 25, and then that special evening. and then that special evening for, what is it, 30 to 50? Okay.
We even have someone who's gone beyond 50.
Yes, yes. So, I don't know if our public knows of these recognitions. You know, we invite, who's being recognized invites a guest, and then we are there. But I don't know as if... And then we also do the Teacher Award each month. But how would our public know the longevity of a lot of our population? I wonder if we can...
I mean, I don't know if we give out the data, but we'll let the media know that these events are happening. Because they're not business meetings, we typically don't get media there. But I mean, we do, anytime there's going to be more than a couple of board members, we will post that just to make sure we're not running afoul of open meetings law. So, yeah, the information's out there, but whether someone chooses to come or not. On the other hand, we have the little booklets with the years of service, and we could easily just provide the media with that information. They can see how many people have been here a long time.
I just thought maybe if we could highlight how proud we are of some of these, then that would shine the spotlight on how long they have been there instead of the turnover lately. So, I don't know if that can somehow go in on a, I don't know, if there's creative ways, or maybe Terry could do something.
Turnover has not really been widespread. I provided the board with some information recently, and it shows that our average, the average longevity of a principal in our district is like 12.3 years or something like that. So, they have been here a long time as a teacher, an assistant principal, a principal. But you do have a few areas where people have moved on. They've had an opportunity, again, to take higher positions in other districts. Some of them have taken higher positions in our district. I mean, Jody is an example of teacher to assistant principal, to principal, to director, to assistant superintendent. There's only one, there's only one place left for it to go. But, you know, and so, so that looks like a lot of turnover. But I mean, she's been here for 10-plus years, and I think that's important.
You missed the number of decades there, I think, Dr. Gray. You were being nice.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, but we can certainly make that information known. I believe Terry did send the recent list of administrative longevity to the Freeman, and I'm not sure what that resulted in article or not. But we do keep track of that. And again, there are a few, you know, we've had some schools that have had a handful of principals turnover, you know, in a short number of years. And we obviously, you know, we don't like that. But again, we are going to make sure that we put the best person we can in there. I mean, I can't imagine any business that would retain someone who's not performing up to par simply to improve longevity. So, you know, people say, boy, you need to operate more like a business. And then when we do, we get in trouble for that. So, but we're going to continue to operate that way and try to find the best people for those positions, whether they come, whether they're moving from within the district, or we can get good people from outside the district.
I don't know if there's an action item or a committee that would address that, but I think in general, the information was put out here, Mrs. Reinacek. But if you have a specific action item that you think you might want to agenda with one of the committees on that, maybe give that some thought. Maybe the chair people can give that some thought, too, and see if we come up with something there. But any other thoughts for future agendized items? All right, we do not have an executive session planned for this evening, so we stand adjourned. Thank you for attending.